I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of August 17th, 2022, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on August 12th, 2022. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is the hearing of the calendar year 2022 municipal budget. The calendar 2022 local municipal budget, which was approved at the meeting held July 20th, 2022, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board by summary as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Council President LaPalooza, giving the budget a second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the second reading, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, the calendar year 2022 Local Municipal Budget. The council president will recognize any persons wishing to speak concerning the budget. Any questions? Ms. Gadeski.
Gail Gadeski, H28 Kennedy Boulevard. A couple of questions I have on the budget. First and foremost, I'd like to know who was our representative at the county during the county budget meeting? I still haven't gotten a response on that. On the summary, on the summary, number three, capital improvements, why are we going from $850,000 to $300,000 in the capital improvement bucket? That's $550,000 less.
That's from last year's budget. We budgeted $850,000, and this year we budgeted $300,000. That's for down payments on bond ordinances, so we needed more last year because we had bond ordinances.
Okay, so it doesn't include any capital improvement?
It can. It can. It'll go into a fund. If we don't use it, it stays in the capital improvement fund and can be used for future use on capital improvements.
Thank you, Donna. Was there anything left in the 2021 budget that you're carrying over into 2022?
Yes. It's not ordered yet.
That's okay.
As far as the expenses, revenues.
Like 3.4 million in revenues excess from last year to this year. That adds into our fund balance, which we probably have now, probably around 20 million.
Okay, thank you. On the actual budget itself, on the revenue, there's a line item that's marked municipal relief fund aid for $480,000. Is this restricted? And if so, or if not, what can it be used for?
What sheet does that?
I don't. It was 125 pages I had to go through, so. It's called municipal relief fund aid.
That's got to be grants.
For $480,000. I don't even think I circled it on my copy.
It has to be grants, which will have restrictions.
Do you know what kind of restrictions off the top of your head?
You can see that $480,000?
Yeah.
In this year's budget?
Yeah.
Donna, on sheet five are general revenues, and it does outline transitional aid, consolidated municipal property tax relief.
Oh, that's stating.
Right.
Stating.
Energy receipts tax, and it all totals a total municipal relief fund in the amount of $465,900.
Right, that was new. That's state aid.
So where does that go?
That's just a revenue. That comes from the state.
And what can we use it for?
It's an offsetting revenue. So again, tax relief. It's just a revenue coming into the budget. For years, the energy receipts tax was cut, and there was legislation that was passed that brought the money back in. And just like a month ago, we received a local finance notice, that's why I forgot about it, to put this into the budget.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mauer. Also, $3.3 million salary increase, and $910,000 is for departments. And I'm questioning, the business administrator's salary is $210,000. And I guess we hired a lot of friends and family and campaign helpers, and none of these jobs that were taken over by new people were even posted, and they're civil service jobs. So I want to know why some departments are so high in salary increases. I know the police have not gotten their contract yet, and I know the police and fire, the non-uniform police and fire, that's 3.3 million. But we had a lot of seasoned retired police officers, so the salary for the newbies, which is no more than, I think, six years, should be a little more stable and balanced. So I'm just questioning, why so high in the departments? There's a couple of departments, finance, health, office of the aging. We hired a lot of people, is that the reason why?
Health went up because last year we still had CARES Act money. A lot of these salaries and wage for January, February, and March, we still had charges against the CARES Act, so their salaries were covered under the CARES Act, public safety and health.
What about finance?
We had new employees transfer, new employees transfer, new hires.
Okay, and the budget, on the salary budget, it does not include any additional salary increases for the patrolman?
Yes, it does.
It does? It's included in there?
Yes, I factored in a percentage, just in case the contract is settled.
Okay, can you disclose that percentage?
I think I did, like 2.75%, 2.5%.
Per salary or overall?
Overall.
Overall, okay. Okay, thank you very much. I think that's all the questions I have on the budget for now. But I really would like to know who, please, represented us at the Hudson County budget meeting? Our taxes are going up, Jersey cities are staying stable, and so is Hoboken's. So I would like to know who represented us?
Gail, when I emailed you back the reply, I told you that it was Donna Mauer that represented the city of Bayonne.
I don't remember seeing that.
I did.
I don't remember getting that email, and I know you've been having problems with emails because only one person on the dais has responded to any of my emails. So Ms. Mauer, that being said, why is our taxes from the county that we're getting less and less services from, where Director Carter and DPW are busting their rear ends trying to do things around the city, and the county is doing hardly anything except taking care of Bayonne Park? Really? When you look at the sewers on Kennedy Boulevard, they're full of leaves, and I gotta keep calling Director Carter all the time. So what happened at that meeting? Can you give us a little insight?
So the county taxes are formula-based. It has to do with the equalized value and the ratio. I am not a tax assessor, so I cannot explain it. It's basically, they take the county budget, and it gets divided up by this ratio of each town. Each town has their own ratio, and whatever that percentage is, that's the percentage that the town has to pay.
Okay, did they include commercial properties, which they're not supposed to? That's why I asked at the last meeting what the calculation was, and was commercial properties included?
It's just a number, it's just a rate. It has nothing to do with commercial. You're better off call the tax assessor or the county tax assessor so they could explain the formula.
Would our tax assessor or our tax collector know the answer so I could call Michelle?
The assessor would, yes, definitely.
Michelle.
Absolutely.
Okay. It would be nice to have her at the meeting to explain. Also, on the budget regarding the water and Suez and everything with that other contract that we have with Viola, just to let the council know, Beth Folger is willing to come and speak. They're flushing hydrants from 24th Street to 43rd Street for three weeks already. Three weeks. It's outrageous, and all they say is to run your water for 10 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, don't do that. If they're flushing and your water is dirty, wait till 4 o'clock, then run your water for 10 minutes. They only want more money by keeping it running. It only comes out as sludge at the end. But I strongly urge them to have Beth Folger here as the speaker next meeting. Thank you.
With no other speakers, I will take a motion to close the budget hearing.
I move.
And a second?
Second.
And on closing the budget hearing, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a resolution introducing the budget amendments. It has to be read in full. It says, whereas the local budget of the calendar year 2022 was approved on the 20th day of July, 2022, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now, therefore be it resolved by the municipal council of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, that the following amendments to the approved budget of calendar year 2022 be made.
Excuse me, but why weren't the amendments read prior to questions and answers?
The process is, you have a budget introduced, you have a hearing on the introduced budget, I will read the budget amendments into the budget. If you have any questions, then you get up and you talk about the amendments.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry.
General revenue, miscellaneous revenues, section G, reserve for the Department of Justice, from zero to $8,414.73, cancellation of various reserves to $217,626.92. Total section G is $20,747.9949.56 to $20,973.9191.21. Miscellaneous revenues from $6,998.267 to $7,528.380.528,380. Total section G miscellaneous revenues from $20,747,949.56 to $20,973.9191.21. Total miscellaneous revenues from $61,685,158.48 to $61,911,200.13. Subsection, subtotal general revenues from $64,785,150.48 to $65,000,000, that's what it should have been, $65,001,200.13. Local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, $83,900,922.66 Total amount to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget, $95,682,822.13 Total revenue, general revenues is $160,467,986,061 to $160,632,660,632,500.54. Operations within caps, the health department salary and wages is from $498,200 to $298,000. The local fiscal recovery fund, health department salary and wages from zero to $200,000. Police uniform salary and wages from $23,200,000 to $19,200,000. Police uniform salaries from zero to $4,000,000. Police non-uniform salary and wages from $3,605,000 to $2,105,000. Police non-uniform salary and wages from zero to $1,500,000. Fire uniform salary and wages from $19,250,000 to $16,250,000. Fire uniform salary and wages from zero to $3,000,000. Streets and roads maintenance salary and wages from $785,000 to $850,000. Buildings and ground salary and wages from $775,000 to $475,000. Building and ground salary and wages from zero to $300,000. Parks and playgrounds recreation salary and wages from $700,000 to $300,000. Parks and playgrounds recreation salary and wages from zero to $400,000. Maintenance of parks salary and wages, $3,600,000 to $2,000,000. Maintenance of parks salary and wages from zero to $1,600,000. Solid waste disposal tipping fees, $4,000,000 to $4,100,000. Total operations within caps is $96,1,600,000 to $96,166,600. And then total operations, including contingents within caps, is $96,2,600 to $96,167,600. And then salary and wages total is $62,545,000 to $62,610,000. Other expenses, $33,457,600 to $33,557,600. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within caps is $113,775,204 to Subtotal general appropriations, $158,892,582.23 to $150,57,582.23. Reserve for uncollected taxes is $1,575,404.38 to $1,574,918.31. Total general appropriations, $160,467,986,61 to $160,632,554. Appropriations for the parking utility, salary and wages, $940,000 to $224,590.58. And salary and wages under the local finance recovery fund from zero to $720,409.42. And who would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Blurry eye on that one. And on the introduction of the amendments, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Are there any questions on the amendments? Come on up.
I'm sorry, guys, but I'm really confused. These are amendments that are just coming forward tonight. The public, we did not have a chance to even look at them. Some of these numbers are going from zero to thousands. What is going on? How could you vote on these amendments without the public looking at them and reviewing them and discussing them? That's a lot of money. A lot of money on salaries. Some salaries were going from zero, and now it's hundreds and thousands of dollars. It's ridiculous. Do your duty. Don't vote for this. Carry it over to the next meeting. Give the public a chance to review it. All these amendments just come through tonight? It's absolutely disgraceful that you're even going to vote on this. Totally. You're lucky that there's not 126 public speakers here tonight like Jersey City's having right now. It's terrible.
Ms. Mauer, do you want to explain most of the zeros to the larger numbers and how ARPA money had to be separated?
Right. The numbers really didn't change. The total stayed the same. When our budget was sent to the state for review, they come back with comments, and they came back and they told us that they want, they're asking all the towns to separate the ARPA money. Instead of putting it in one line, they want to see what it's offsetting, so where you're using it. So when I'm saying I'm using it for public safety salaries, well, they want to know where in public safety. So the state requested these amendments. That's the only, and really, if you add it up, nothing changed. Nothing changed.
Do you have a copy of these amendments, Bruce?
Yes, the clerk has them, yes. It was actually just done yesterday. The state just sent me yesterday, the final, that's what happens. They review it and they come back. But it really, the number in the end actually went down from the original budget. The number actually went down because there were more revenues added into the budget, so the tax, the amounts we raised actually went down a little bit in the amendment. And as far as the public, if it increases, if any appropriation increases or decreases by 10% or more, then we're required to advertise and have a public, re-advertise and have a public hearing. We didn't hit any of those triggers because everything basically stayed the same.
So this is a one-time amendment?
Yes.
Do you, Madam Clark, do you have copies of the amendments?
I don't have a copy to give you right now.
Aren't they supposed to be available?
No.
Okay.
Donna, if I may, in layman's terms, the amendments were not a reflection of any increase in the budget. They simply were reclassification of how we were naming those dollars.
Correct. Okay.
That everybody understands that. So the budget itself did not increase from the budget that was published, it simply was a reallocation of those numbers.
But salary increased.
Wasn't a salary?
Because we don't have the care money anymore. So it actually increased year over year.
Well, it certainly did increase year over year, but that's what we call inflation.
Mike Vissigno, I just think it would have been easier if you put that up with the original budget, and we're sitting here and all of a sudden we get all these figures thrown at us, and when it goes 20 million, all of a sudden it gets a little confusing. That's all I think would have been easier.
We don't get, we don't have that information at the time the original budget is introduced?
Right, but I mean, tonight.
We just received them yesterday from the state.
Yeah, so you couldn't copy it in one day?
I got it this afternoon.
You this afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying, it just, the meeting's coming up, it would have been, you know, I'm sitting here, I'm no financial genius, but I'm reading that budget, and then all of a sudden I'm getting hit with all these numbers. If you were at up to millions, I'm like going, who, where'd these millions come from? But like you say, it's the same amount of money, but if you're sitting here, it just would have been easier for the general public to understand. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? And with that, since the budgets do not need to be advertised, I will take a motion to adopt the final budget.
Move.
And a second? And on final adoption of the municipal budget, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, one, is an ordinance entitled an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilmember Carroll. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance to establish the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh one? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, two, is an ordinance entitled an ordinance referring the redevelopment plan to the planning board for the consistency review for the redevelopment plan for the property located at 69-73.
You gonna carry that, Madam?
Right, I still gotta read it for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Located at 69-73 LaFonte Way, and adopting said redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th. It is before the council, but it is now being moved to be postponed.
Right, there's a question on it, though. We'll look through the question.
Sure.
Did this go through the planning board, or did it go directly to the council? And if so, why?
It was not.
I don't remember hearing it on the planning board meetings.
They pulled it, on Tuesday night, they did not hear it, so that's why we're not considering it tonight.
Well, you shouldn't consider it anyway, Mr. Coffey, because you read a resolution that everything's halted, so it shouldn't be read anyway. It should be, everything should be pulled. Thank you.
Mr. LaPalooza, move.
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead. Just state your name and address for me, please.
Good evening. Melissa Gadeski Rodriguez, 148 Avenue F. I understand it's being carried over, but I do have a question regarding the redevelopment. So to my knowledge, when we have redevelopment, residents get maps, right within like so many feet. I don't really know the specific ordinance.
Residents get notified, you mean? Is that what you're?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They get this. I'm not sure if any of you or how many of you have actually ever received one of these. They're not really legible. And I'm a typical, you know, I'm your typical everyday resident. I know there's a lot of many elderly residents. There's new homeowners. There's so many different types of residents we have here in Bayonne. And when they get sent things like this, just regarding any redevelopment around the city, it can be really confusing, somewhat misleading, and some of us may take it as being deceitful. This work is hard work, but maybe we can talk to, I think the developers send this out, correct?
Based on a 200-foot list, like you're within 200, they're required by statute to provide you with whatever is required and they just send it to people within 200 feet of that property.
A lot of times it's just a letter, though.
A lot of times it is just a letter with a.
We got lucky with this one, didn't we, over on Avenue F? So, not to be funny, I think we got lucky. But if you're going to send it, yeah, not everybody got it either. But if we're going to send it, maybe it's something the city can work with our developers on, right? I'm all about a solution to try to get at least residents more legible maps that they can understand so that they can better understand what's happening in their neighborhoods and communicate to their council effectively.
Is that a map or are those plans?
This is what was sent for the development behind Avenue F to the residents in Avenue F.
Melissa, did you not get a letter of explanation with that?
Didn't, did not get.
That's what you received.
Literally. This flat, too. Like, it was like, here you go, here's your door.
Very nice. They paid extra for that.
It's like a nice poster. That's about all it is.
Melissa, would you see that I get a copy of that and tell me
Hundred percent.
who the developer is and then I'll give them a call.
Sue, do you want to look at that and see if you can make, catch the tails of that?
Good evening, I'm Sue Matt. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Hi, I'm Suzanne Mack. I'm the city planner. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of it and hopefully you'll be able to help me do my job better. So, under the redevelopment law, you get the 200-foot list for the area need study, which was done maybe a month or two ago. You know, they're required to do that. They're not required to send out any additional notice after the area need. So I don't know who sent that to you. But thankfully, you're going to give it to Joe Ryan, our press guy, and he's going to give it to us. But we want you to know what's going on, but the, I think we said, the redevelopment law says that you have to get that. You get it when you do the area need study and I did that a few months ago. Not too long ago, but if you just recently got that for this meeting, they're not required to send it. So they're not required and we haven't seen it either. So, but this is on hold.
But I wonder if it isn't something that the city could take on, if we know, if we're providing them with the documentation of the residents that are within that 200.
We do when they do the area.
And do we send a letter of explanation letting them know that they're resident within that 200 feet? I should expect something from the developer? I mean, I think that might clarify things.
They, they, I don't even know if John W., John W. Casella or redevelopment council sends that out or.
The statute requires the developer, the, it's incumbent upon the municipality to provide the 200-foot list to the developer. Developer then has strict statutory requirements that they have to comply with in order to, and most of the time it's in connection with the zoning or planning matter, area need study. There are certain statutes that require dissemination of information by the applicant to put people on notice that there's going to be a hearing or some sort of process taking place.
And I, through the planning office for the area need study, I make sure that that notice is published not once but twice. So it's published one week, two weeks. So I don't know of a requirement when the redevelopment plan is. I've always been told and I've always asked how you get that out. And I've been told that it's just the public notice for the meeting that it's listed and then on the website and things like that.
Okay, I more than agree with Melissa.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but I don't know who said that.
Yeah, I, fortunately, I wish I did, too.
Is really illegible. It's not helpful.
Yes.
So.
And I don't have it. So.
And you don't even have.
Does it say La Fante or do we even know what it's about?
Absolutely. I'd love to be able to tell you that, but I could not say that to you with any search.
We did send it. I live at 148 Avenue F, so it's somewhere around the area.
Avenue G is not, Avenue G is not the Seahorse property that we're talking about.
No, it's not.
But this has East 24th Street, East 22nd Street, East 22nd Street.
But that's not.
East 23rd Street. No, no, I don't, I don't know.
That's a whole other project that we don't even know. So thank you for notifying us about.
Melissa, do you know who's?
Well, we just heard a whole lot of things that was productive.
Who was the developer? Do you have a return address?
An envelope?
I can go back and check. I'll go back and check. If I get anything, I'll get it over to you, of course.
Sue, my other question is, is the council member that is within that area, are we notified when that 200-foot list goes out?
I will tell you that I, but you may not get legal notification, but I have never not, not.
You tell.
I would, I would at least let you know something that was in your area.
Maybe you could CC us on the.
I would be happy to see everyone.
Email with the, with the list. Perhaps we could do something to get notice out, even if it's just. You know, honestly, I can't, Melissa, you know, I can't promise you I could send out any personal letter, but at least I could put it, I could post it on social media. I could invite you to call me for questions. So I would like that, too.
And I will, I don't even know what that one's about. So I don't know who it came from, but.
I will work on seeing like what else came with it. But again, it was just to your attention because it's not fair that as council members in the City of Bayon, you don't know what we're getting in the mail.
There definitely is. Avenue G is a new street being proposed for another development that was up here a year ago. I don't even, you know, so.
Right, but the, if Melissa received this.
They didn't send it to me.
Within 10 blocks of where she lives are two different schools, one public, one private. There, there's a number of other facilities there that I would want to make sure we're aware that this construction was going to happen.
Councilperson, there's so much going down on that area. Everybody should know about everything and.
I could not agree more.
But I would say, I want you to direct me to slow it down so we can make sure that everybody's notified.
Have no fear.
I appreciate your time and thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Absolutely.
And again, Council President and Jay, we have to find out who's sending these things out and then we'll.
If it doesn't have a cover, usually the cover letter has a block, a lot, and address and it describes the time and date of the meeting. If somebody just mailed out that.
And we don't even know.
You might as well just mail out a placemat.
Avenue G has nothing to do with the item that is being tables to be moved to another meeting because it's not ready because I don't object to. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you for letting me know.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to postpone this to the September 21st meeting. Who would like to second? And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Three is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 4 filming, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 4 filming. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard. Council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh three? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Oh, four is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 5 Animal Control, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilmember Booker. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
The second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 5 Animal Control. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
On the ordinance and everything, how much, how many fines have been written in a year on the pet waste situation? I mean, I hear complaints all the time from everybody. I just wondered how many have been written. I mean, it's great if you make it a million dollars if it's not enforced.
Not enough is probably the answer, but go ahead, Jake. You've got a better answer.
I don't have the answer to that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Just want to piggyback on his statement about the enforcement, because that's really what it's about, is enforcing it. One, it's income for the city. Two, it's accountability on the residents to make a cleaner neighborhood. What, like, what are your ideas? What are we looking at as far as enforcement? What can we change to start getting it enforced? Because I'll tell you, if you wrote me a $1,250, you know, $1,250 fine, I'm probably going to clean up and never do it again. That's me. That might be a lot of other people as well. So like, what are we thinking about enforcement around some of these ordinances?
So this is, this is the city being proactive. We see there's a need for this. Right in the ordinance, it explains who's going to be enforcing this. So we have animal control officer, litter inspector, parking enforcement officers, any municipal officials designated or authorized by either the Department of Public Works, Director of Municipal Services, Director of Public Safety, or the health officer employed by the city can issue a fine. And the fines went up also, so there was a change to that as well. So it's, it's within 100 to 1,250 is the range.
Now, are we thinking that just can we, you know, this might sound really mean, but like, you know, push the pedal on that. Like, you see it, write the ticket. Don't be scared to write the ticket. Don't be scared to hold us, us residents. We are one Bayonne accountable for our neighborhood, right? We talk, I know, I, Mr. Carroll, I talk about all the time. We're responsible for our neighborhood. They will hold us accountable for it, too. Write me a ticket, but I would really love to see that income to the city and clean our streets, for sure.
Again, we would rather see everybody just pick up after themselves.
Oh, me, too.
And we wouldn't have to have income that way. But if not, this is, this is the city basically putting everybody on notice to say, we're with you, we understand your problem, and we're going to try and enforce this. These are the people that are going to enforce it and you're going to see, once this is signed in, that there is going to be an increase in enforcement.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance amending, supplementing, supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 11 Police Department, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Mr. Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 11 Police Department. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Come on up. Go.
I'd just like to know what the changes are here.
This is a third-party entity that does the scheduling for, not off-duty, but extra-duty assignments for the police. And within the body of, when we submit, when we provide information, they provide information back about who they've assigned. There was, there's a fee involved that goes, that gets paid to the city. They need that to be done as part of an ordinance so they can pay us that money. So this is just really just tightening up our ability to get paid by the company that is doing the work.
I don't understand, Jay. What exactly are we tightening up?
If there's a 2% fee to the City of Bayon that the company's giving to us for the, for providing, they're providing a service. Let's say they get 8% from a homeowner, 2% goes to the city. They need an ordinance for them to reimburse us for that 2%. So this is just in concert with their contract. In order to pay the bill, they want us to have an ordinance that says we're going to get paid.
Are we talking about the same ordinance, oh five?
Duty assignments.
Right, so that's our safety department?
It's our police department.
Our police department.
Right, our police department has an entity that does their extra-duty assignment scheduling.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
So as they get paid, we get a percentage of what they get paid. In order for them to pay us, they need an ordinance so they can just put it in their file. And every municipality has to have an ordinance that says we are, we're going to charge X amount for, in connection with this service.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance has been, or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 21 Health Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held July 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution moved by Councilmember Booker, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on a resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayon Chapter 21 Health Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Just state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm John Beginsky, CPA, at 123 West 15th Street. I was at the Health Department last week. I understand, I am the last and remaining homing pigeon member. And I'm in good standing with the city. I've had pigeons in my family on 15th Street for over 68 years, as long as I've been alive. I took over the birds in 1964 when my brother went to Vietnam. I've had them since then, since I've been 11 years old. And I just don't, I guess what I'm doing is, I understand I'm grandfathered under the old ordinances, but I'm just a little confused as why this amendment is including pigeons as a farm animal. This homing pigeon is just a phenomenal animal. And I think what I'm trying to do is give you a breath of what these birds are all about. A lot of you are younger and just don't know what they are. At one time, when I was younger, you know, again, 10, 11 years old, I used to clean all the pigeon coops. All the guys in Bayon, there were like 40 guys at the time, the Larees, the DeSena's, the Torellos. I just helped everybody out. And these pigeons are just phenomenal. They come back from 600 miles away. And it's just a sport that, it's just a great hobby. I have a coop and I brought some pictures. This is my coop, which is a, basically a condo. I mean, it's really clean. It's, you know, it's got skylights and everything. And again, I just don't understand why we're treating these birds as a farm animal. And I understand there's issues with, you know, other. And I understand there's issues with, you know, other types of animals in town and all, but again, what I'm trying to do is, is reach out for all the former members that were in Bayonne, and, and I think it, it should be perhaps maybe amended and excluded from treatment as a farm animal, especially since there's really, I haven't had any complaints with, and I checked with the city, with the Health Department, and they're fine with, you know, my registration of the birds and all. And, and again, and, and we do provide a benefit. I've, I've had my birds at grammar schools, I've been given presentations all my life with the birds. I attend various functions, and I release the birds, like the Kennedy Golf Outing, I bring them to. I'm a member in good standing in three or four pigeon clubs in Hoboken, in Lynnhurst, in North Bergen. Recently, I also got our club to make a donation to set up a reading garden for Bridget O'Donnell, when she passed, was killed. Her, she used to swim in her uncle's pool, which was right next door to me, and he used to always look at the birds and all that. And again, I, I just, I just feel that these birds just, you know, should be perhaps excluded from this, this ordinance.
Mr. Beginski.
Yes.
If I can make a suggestion, maybe we can carry this till next month, and maybe if the council's okay with that, we can revisit this with the Health Department and see if everybody's okay. Maybe the pigeons could be excluded from the rest of the animals.
Yeah. And just some well-known people, I had the opportunity to meet Mike Tyson at one time, because he has pigeons in Jersey City. So, I was going to bring him here and fight it out.
But I do want to say...
I didn't want to do that.
I do want to say, I wish more people were as clean with the animals as you are.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, you know, again, I, I work in Edison, I'm a corporate tax guy, corporate officer, and I, I work in Edison now 44 years, and before I leave work, I, I leave, I'm, I'm on my hands and knees cleaning these coops, these birds. And I understand, I mean, the birds are filthy. I mean, especially this time of the season now, they molt. I mean, the birds are flying, but I have eight swimming pools in my neighborhood that surround me, and I ask all the time, is there any problem, any complaints? Let me know, you know, and everyone's fine with it. Again, when I was a kid, there were four pigeon coops in my 15, 16 Avenue A Boulevard area, and the problem is, is there's, down 16th Street Park, there's like 150, I would call them rat pigeons, because that's what they are, rats with wings. And they, they just, people just feed them and all, and everyone sees them, and they think they're my birds. And just to show you one of my great pigeons, this was one of my birds that won a 50th anniversary race. I mean, look, that bird's clean, you know, I mean, and if you go in my coop, these, these birds, that's what they look like. And this bird won a race, it flew 360 miles in seven hours, 52 hours, 52 miles per hour. And this bird was, was supposed to be released on a Saturday in Cadiz, Ohio, but because of rain, they held the race, the birds to release until Monday. So, this bird was in, these birds were in baskets until then.
Mr. Beginski, how many birds do you have?
I got about 100, you know, and I, I try to keep it, you know, keep it, keep it down. And this was me releasing them at a golf, and talk about being clean, I, I released them at a golf outing for Kenny T., you know, as a, and then also, one of the things I did is I helped out the Bronx Club. Right after 9/11, the members of the Bronx Club, there were a lot of policemen and firemen, and we set up a special memorial race, a World Trade Center Memorial Race, and, and I was, I, I helped them out with that, and, and what they did is they did a donation to the New York City Police and Fireman's Widows and Children's Fund for that. So, so there's a lot of good these birds, and, and the birds are, again, they're, they're not a farm animal, they're not, they haven't bred for farm purposes, you know, and they should perhaps be excluded. Thank you for your time.
There's a question?
Question. Real quick, Mr. Beginski, I have no problem with putting this off, okay, and I understand, and I appreciate the education that you just gave us about birds. We see them around town. You're being grandfathered in. Just out of your knowledge, how many people in town have bird cages? Do you know?
I, I, I'm the last one, I believe. I went to the Health Office, Michelle told me that, I believe.
I think for pigeons, you're, you're correct. You're the, and then there was one, that's you.
Yeah. You know, but again, I, I know, you know what it is, is as everything else, everything is dying out, you know, I mean, it's, it's more popular in other parts of New Jersey, than in Florida, and obviously, a lot of retired people are still doing it. The younger generation just aren't getting involved, but it's just a great sport. I mean, and I just say, hey, and I'm, I'm here to really representing the people that gave me this hobby when I was a young kid, you know, I mean, it kept me off streets, you know, this and that, and...
And I can tell you, Mr. Beginski, what prompted the drawing up of this ordinance wasn't you or your pigeons.
I, I, I understand that. But, but the, but then why would it, were you including it?
Because the original, well, again, you're, you're the last of...
Right.
Of your breed.
But again, the thing is, if someone still wanted, a young person wanted to have pigeons, you still have ordinances that make it very restrictive to put a new coop up. You still need 75, consent from everybody within 75 feet of the pigeon coop. So, that's hard. All you need is one person to say, no, they can't have it.
And I, I think that's something that maybe they want to talk with the Health Officer about. Definitely a different application for pigeons as opposed to other poll.
Yeah. Like I said, Jersey City is very, you know, it's very astute going strong. Hoboken, I, I believe is, it's gone, you know, most of the guys there are just, what happens is, is all the old, actually, is today's Jersey Journal, the obituary has James, a good friend of mine, James Bonavito, he was the head of, he owned the JD Provisions, he was the last pigeon guy in, in Hoboken, and, you know, it's just, it's a shame that, you know, things just, such a great sport, it just goes away. And the thing is, if you, there's a lot of classic movies that showed pigeons on the waterfront, who I've known, a lot of the, when I was a member of the Hoboken Pigeon Club, the old timers there were involved in that film, and then The Longest Day, and, you know, The Producers, Springtime for Hitler. So, anyway, it's just been such, you know, and again, you got to see these birds. To, to sit there waiting for the birds to come back from, you know, wherever they're all raced, and, and one, like, five, 500 miles away in London, Ohio, on a 94-degree day, and then all of a sudden, you're thinking, ah, we're not going to get birds today, they'll come tomorrow morning. And then you see a, a spot in a, and then you see it getting bigger and bigger and making a V dive to your coop. It's just phenomenal.
I'd love to see that, if you want to be a tour one day, I would love that.
Absolutely. And you know, and guess what? They make the greatest tomatoes. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your education, and thanks for not bringing Mike Tyson, please.
Chris Kadeski?
I used to date a guy that did homing pigeons. They're totally different than the pigeons we see on the street, and I would recommend that you postpone and take care of Mr. Beginski.
Okay, so, is everybody's agreeing, we're going to make a motion to carry this? Okay.
Just to make sure that even people, I know some neighbors that have a chicken here and there, that they're grandfathered in, if you have some pets from the farm.
If, if you are currently properly licensed, because the existing statute, that existing ordinance has been on the books for many, many years, under that ordinance, you have to have the written consent of all the neighbors within 75 feet of your property.
Right.
So, so if someone is legally maintaining poultry or farm animals, whatever, with the consent of their neighbors, and, and that's on file with us, then they will be grandfathered in, this will not apply to them. We can't, we can't apply an ordinance retro, retroactively. So, those individuals will still be free to, to have their chicken coops, pigeon coops, whatever. If they're not legal, however, it, it doesn't apply.
All right, thank you. So, so it's a motion to carry till...
Till September?
Yes.
And on the motion to carry, postpone, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Do I, do I need anything from me on this, for this question? Do we have anything, do I need to provide anything?
Do we need anything from Mr. Beginski that might help us in our effort?
No, I, I think, I think the council's...
Help draft, maybe some amendments that I could email and figure?
You want to send them to me, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you my card all in a second.
Oh, eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 7 Traffic.
Oh, seven, oh, seven.
Oh, seven. I flipped one too many. Okay. Well, it's amending Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held July 20th, was published in the New Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August 17th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution ordering, giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Mr. Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
What are the amendments?
So, the exceptions used to be vehicles exceeding 16,000 pounds. So, this is basically saying trucks, tractors, trailers, and commercial vehicles now, excluding their parking now. And it used to have locations, and now it's, we're basically saying they cannot park on the street.
We're a blue-collar town. Where are they going to park?
I don't know.
Where are they going to park?
Commercial vehicles have to have, a business has to have their own lot or their own space to put it in.
Is this regarding La Fante Way, where they pull, park on the side?
And that, if La Fante Way is included, yes.
With the new road that we just paved and everything? These poor truck drivers are running around ragged, delivering our goods and services, and now they're not going to have a place to take a nap and then wind up getting in an accident on Route 440 North like the other day?
Actually, it's East 22nd Street.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, it's East 22nd, but still, I mean, come on, they're not bothering anybody. They're really not bothering anybody. They need to rest before delivering goods and services. We have to think outside the box. You know, what's good for the city? We're getting more Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, this truck, that truck. We're making, making convenient for them to travel through Bayonne in and out, but these poor truck drivers, blue-collar workers that are trying to make a buck, you're telling them they got to go pay rent someplace to, to park to sleep for an hour. Come on, guys.
Miss Kadeski, if the Walmart truck comes in, the Walmart truck needs to rest, he should rest in the Walmart lot.
But they're not Walmart trucks there. Do you, take a ride down, the regular...
That's the example.
They're the, but it's not a good example, Gary. It's not a good example. Take a ride down East 22nd Street and see who's parking there.
I seen them, I seen them.
It's the blue-collar guys that need to take a nap or have something to eat. I hope you vote this down.
Gail, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Director Cotter to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he found was that a lot of the businesses in that area were using the sides of those roads really for extra parking, not, it was not truck drivers that needed an area to rest, but it, rather, it was the businesses in the area just parking their, their vehicles there, using it as almost like a storage lot.
That's not true. Royal Wine lets its trucks park there, and AMTT, that's not true. If you take a ride down, you'll see, it's the everyday blue-collar worker that's trying to make a buck and save on gas.
Tom Slary.
Good evening. Tom Slary, 8 West Grant Street. Talking about big trucks. Gary, you know where this is going. We have a guy, a, a commercial, gentleman working commercial business out of 10 garages and a basement of a two-family house on 48th Street. He gets tractor-trailers every day from 4:30, quarter to 5:00, to 7:00 o'clock in the morning. They go down 48th Street. 48th Street has potholes, it looks like Iraq. Streets is falling apart. We're paving them, he's still getting tractor-trailers down there. One day, they have him, he has them also double parking on Avenue C, idling. I went over four times the four different trucks, told them, there's a city ordinance, three minutes, shut down. Guy says, I have to wait for a delivery. I said, I don't care. You got it shut down in three minutes, I'm going to wait. If it's not shut down in three minutes, I'm calling the cops. They don't do, that gentleman down there does not care. He's not, I don't think he's paying the right taxes on that property. He's running a commercial property, and his name is Lieberman. He's been there ever since I was a kid, and I'm 58 years old.
Tom, can I just answer you? Chief Skirbo, if you're listening, about 4:00 in the morning, I had a couple local businesses that contacted me about this problem. I've spoken to you a couple different times about this. The police go down there, but he doesn't have a tractor-trailer every day. So, the times they went there, he had a straight job.
Okay, and the straight job is, and the straight job is about 40,000 pounds.
And the idling is what's...
Still over the weight limit.
Idling is still a, a bad part of this, but I think three different times I've had the police look into this, and each time, they were not able to catch them with the tractor-trailer, but I think that's the, that's the time when it's the worst.
Well, I'll call them, I'll call them first thing tomorrow morning at 5:30.
So, if we can maybe get Sergeant Conti or somebody in traffic that can investigate this, you said about 4:00 in the morning?
About 4:00, 4:30, they start, they start coming down, and then they're at 5:30.
And he's complaining about Letterman, the Egg Man on 48th Street.
I'll be happy to call you at 5:00 in the morning. I'll call you at 5:00 tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That's when they, that's when they...
Call me, call the police.
I'm calling you, too. But it, it, you know, it's, it's tremendous over there.
I, I, a couple local businesses contacted me and told me about it, even at that time, consider it early or late or whatever, it's still an issue, and going down that block, I was told that it, since it's very tight, that they're getting very close to the vehicles, too.
Yeah, especially, you've got an ordinance, no heavy trucks on the side streets, and he's getting heavy trucks, them straight job, the straight jobs they got are close to the, way over 26,000 pounds.
And I have your information, so if you want to go through me to, to get to him, I'll give you what their findings were, and of course, if they're breaking the law, we're going to take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Joe Metusick, 10 Oak Street, and I'd like to just make a comment regarding the Oak Street redevelopment project. I represent about 20 or 30 people.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can, can you just wait for the public comments?
Oh, I thought that was.
Welcome to do it.
I'm sorry.
We're still talking about oh, seven right now?
Excuse me?
Okay. Does it sign up sheet? Did you put your name on the sheet? Okay, okay.
Anybody else? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second. On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
I would...
Second.
And on the motion for final passage, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Now, back to oh, eight. Is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter Seven traffic, which was introduced and passed the reading at the meeting held July twentieth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August seventeenth is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution is moved by Councilmember La Palusa, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter Seven traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh, eight? Okay, no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Oh.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Just wanna remind everybody that this is a five-minute comment period. Each person has five minutes to make their comments.
And it is not a question and answer period also. Our speaker is Gail Gadesky.
Good evening again, Gail Gadesky, Eight Twenty-Eight Kennedy Boulevard. First and foremost, I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize to my teachers at Henry Harris Bayonne High School, St. Peter's University, and Fairfield University for the fastness in public speaking. I, they taught me well, but unfortunately, because of the five minutes, I can no longer live up to their standards that they taught me very well. First and foremost, I would personally like to thank Clerk Medina for going above and beyond trying and offering to assist me in getting answers to my questions. Thanks also needs to go to Ms. Weimer for answering my, my emails. Before, I am sure someone told her not to respond until legal advisement. You know, back on seven twenty-two, I sent an email to Mr. La Palusa asking for answers to my questions, which a lot of them were answered today, and I had to wait until eight eight to get any kind of response. I guess Jay was on vacation. They were on the record, I thought my questions were, but when I received the minutes, a hundred and twenty-five pages, the public comments are not included in the minutes. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think we pay a company like we're rendering out a lot of things to take care of the minutes, and the, the public comments are not addressed in the minutes of the meeting. I think they should be. They should be part of the official record and answered during the public comments section, in my opinion. Deputy Chief Skirbo and Director Kubert answered two of my questions, however, no answer to my question regarding the county budget meeting, which was answered today. As previously noted, Jersey City and Hoboken had no tax increase, but again, here we stand with Bayonne getting an eight percent tax increase when the Davis Slate ran on stabilization of taxes. Also, I never got an answer regarding the plaque for all those we lost during COVID at the Bayonne Park or even paver stones. I didn't get an answer on that, and I would like an answer on that. I'm not putting in writing, you work for the people, I deserve an answer. I think that we could come up with the money.
Not question and answer.
All right.
I think... Have questions, send them to me, I will get them to the council.
That's not your job. I'm sorry, that's not your job. Now, I'm asking what your office hours are so the public could speak directly to you, directly to you and sit down and have a conversation, 'cause this is utterly ridiculous. And I'm not gonna put my questions in writing. You work for us, not just those who voted for you, but for everybody. No response regarding the Twenty-Fifth Street Bridge. Didn't anyone know that safety certification had to be done by the contractor before installation took place? Isn't that somebody's job? Now, the Thirty-Second Street Bridge. Sumac got up and spoke about the four-forty pedestrian bridge after being a little confused about, did we have a Thirty-Second Street Bridge? And she said she would get back to us and never did. Getting back to the budget, I believe that there's several pilots coming due, but we're entitled to the equivalent of that money, so I don't know if anybody's taking that into consideration. I hope they are, and the budget will be amended once again downward. And the police contract, I'm still waiting for an answer on that. What's going on with that? It's taking way too long. Our police officers deserve a raise. Maybe we need to stop people from utilizing city vehicles to go down the shore, go to lunch, using, utilizing them on weekends, and there's a hefty sum of money we could save on gas and repairs alone. 'Cause that's happening, and you know it, I know it, everybody knows it. Now, on August twelfth, I sent an email to the entire council regarding the planning board approval of the eighteen-story Silkloft Tower, which was approved after the resolution, item number fifty-six, page fifty-three, on the unapproved minutes, was unanimously approved. Is there not any communication between boards and the administration? The email basically asked them to please refer to the unapproved minutes of the regular meeting of July twentieth. This project should not be approved, whether it's this month, next month, or the month after that. You all voted to halt. Live up to your word. Please remember, you took an oath, you work for the people, the city of Bayonne, not just those who voted for you. Again, I repeat that. Lastly, I need to apologize once again to all my English and public speaking professors throughout the city of Bayonne's educational system, St. Peter's University, and Fairfield University. This is not the way I was taught. Thank you. Good evening, council. I'd like to just get right to the point. I wanna know why the town is under a formaldehyde watch? Why is formaldehyde running through, beginning to the end of this town? Chemicals that contain formaldehyde in every nick and cranny of this town? Why? I've been here too many times, I want answers. Why I was forced into the street? Why Michael Boschwick has the right to harass me, make a movie about me, and disgrace my name? Why? And who's above it? 'Cause I'm ready to sign a complaint against Mayor Davis, and we'll go to court. I'm ready for Michael Quintella. I'm ready for Ben Fasetti. I'm ready for Joseph Scudder. I'm ready for these people. And we're gonna see who's gonna stand upside down in court. I'm deteriorating. I am deteriorating, Mayor Davis, Governor Murphy. Who in God's name gave these people the right to do this to me? If I wasn't the person I was, or I am, I should say, I'd be in jail, and they'd be buried. Who in God's name gave these people to do what they're doing? To find me laying in a parking lot at the ER, just about dying? If somebody didn't pull in and see me, I would've been dead. That was three weeks ago. This is three times now that the medical center saved my life. It's a disgrace. And the Bayonne people going around scratching their face every time they see me. Do you know formaldehyde makes you itch real bad? It's not a joke. It's not a joke. Go online and see people that are harassed with it. And if you could sit there and laugh, I hope God's watching you. Nobody has anything to say. Well, I would like this tape to go to Governor Murphy. Because I know you guys are not to blame, but to mimic me? Let me tell you something, you look like fools. And I'll be damned, I'll be damned if I'm gonna walk around looking the way that I am right now. Somebody's gonna pay for this. Somebody's gonna pay, and it's gonna be big time. Thank you, council. Oh, and by the way, I do have an apartment. And because of this, I gotta live in the street. What is floating in the air of my apartment? That I can't stay in the apartment for ten minutes? Does it have to do with Michael Boschwick and his profession as a movie star? We'll see.
Mr. Slary?
Good evening. We have one of the best police departments in, in the state. I am totally upset with the crime and everything that's happening in this town. You, you were a younger officer. Jersey City was afraid to come into Bayonne. They always said, oh, we can't go to Bayonne. Cops always watching us. Now, everybody's coming in. Crap is happening in this town. Your hand, police department's hands are tied. Attorney General, oh, you arrest them, let them out, and then fifteen minutes later, letting the dirtbags out. I like to see the patrol, just picking up on the patrols on Boulevard every morning. I see it when I'm at work. I patrol the Boulevard also. I see the sheriffs out there with Bayonne. I see Bayonne out there constantly pulling people over, but that's only on, on Boulevard. I remember when I used, was a kid, I was walking the street. Cop looked at you, you look, you, you look strange. Cop stopped you, asked you what you were doing, where you lived. We don't have that now, because the Attorney General and the state legislators, a bunch of more ones, including Murphy, has these cops' hands tied, not just this town, Jersey City, New York, Hoboken, West New York, Union City, Gunberg that only has four cops, North They hands are tied. I talk to these cops every day. Their hands are tied, they can't do nothing. They're afraid to do anything because of the state legislator. And the Attorney General's saying, you gotta follow this guy lines, you gotta tell, you gotta listen to what I tell you. No, I want the Bayonne cops the way we had them when we were kids. Show people that they're all protected in this town, not letting everybody walk in. I mean, I remember Joe, when he, Deputy Chief was a rookie when he came on. We had one of the tightest police forces going. Jersey City cops, we didn't say it. Now, it's, it's free for all. Got murders going on in Bayonne, never had that before. I don't know how much the crime rate went up, but you got Jonathan, who's the bagpiper, he's not coming out on June tenth and eleventh because he's afraid because of the crime rate going up. And he was an officer. You have a cop that plays the bagpipe almost every day in Bayonne, who's refusing to come out on September eleventh because of his safety. That's a disgrace. We should get our police department back the way it was when we, when I was a kid, when you were a kid, when Gordons were kids and everybody. You couldn't walk the streets without getting looked at. You drive by, cop stops you, if you look, if you look strange driving, they pulled you over anyhow. They didn't have, they didn't have to wait to get, to run a red light. Nowadays, like I said, we have the best police department in town, in the state, but their hands are tied because our state legislators, Murphy, even the state troopers say the same thing. They haven't been pulling cars over like they used to, because they're, they're not told, but with everything going on, they're afraid to do anything. All the police departments have to get back together, show who has the balls, and tell the, tell the crooks and all the dirtbags, it's stopping, it's stopping at the borders. Up on Avenue, Avenue C, Broadway, Boulevard, and the Bayonne Bridge. I mean, we, we got, we got the Port Authority that has jurisdictions from the bridge to the tunnel. Utilize them. We have, we got the shovers in, in town now, still. We got two cops every day in the Bayonne Park, sheriffs, plus our units. But, yeah, I wanna see Bayonne being put back the way it was. The cops getting the brass balls and stopping everybody that looks different, that's, you know, I know we have problems, they're gonna say racial and everything else, this is, you know, it's not racial anymore.
Tommy, thirty seconds, rapid.
And I'm done. It's, it's, that's the way it's gonna, they're, people gonna say it, but it has to go back the way it was.
Okay, for obvious reasons, I wanna jump in real quick. First of all, I agree with you one hundred percent. Bayonne is one of the finest police departments in the state, if not in the country. Okay, now, in terms of the town, I'm gonna defend Bayonne continuously. Okay, a lot of these situations that are going on, they're isolated incidents, so you wanna start talking about numbers. Okay, from my training and my experience, ninety percent of the time, if not more, the actor knows the victim. Okay, so some of these acts that are going on are not specifically going out and just random.
Right.
Okay, and there's no geographical cure for crime. Okay, so you can go anywhere and find crime. The fact of the matter is, I agree with you one hundred percent, we need to pay more attention to our police department, we have fine supervisors and we have fine officers. We've lost a lot of good officers.
I don't know.
So, I, I agree, but listen, the department is gonna change. You don't want some sixty-five-year-old cop running around there, do you? Okay, so my point is, a lot of these young guys are gonna have to be trained and learned, and they come out of the academy prepared. It's a different time, it's a different animal. So, my point being is that the town itself is going to go through a transitional period along with the department changing, and that's, that's accepted. So, we have to work together, okay, and try to get to an end to justify the means. But there are isolated incidents, nobody's running around, from my opinion, and I'm speaking for me, that are running around and randomly, there are acts that do happen, but it's, it's not, it's not as bad as, as Jersey City, I hate to say that.
No, not...
It's not bad at Jersey City. So, let's, I'm, I'm just gonna leave it at that, but I, I agree with you in terms of department, they're doing the best job for this town.
Thank you.
For the record, two meetings in a row, you answered questions and didn't answer mine.
I didn't answer any of those questions.
I'm just saying.
And I also replied to you three times in your emails, just saying.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Melissa Gadesky Rodriguez, one forty-eight Avenue F. So, totally understand, it's not a Q and A. Residential parking. Avenue F has been a little bit of a hot mess, okay? I'm learning, supposedly. Again, I have no facts, wanna be clear on that. Some of these buildings apparently are charging their residents. I don't know if we all knew that when we decided, hey, you can't get a residential parking permit. Some of these residents are not paying for their spot, so they are parking on the street after ordinance hours. I, I have the pictures, I have video. It, you know, two weekends ago, there was no parking on Avenue F. They were all in the building. I said, hey, why aren't you parking your building? It's too hot. Can I use your parking spot? Realistically, I would think that, you know, that's not something we can control, they can park where they want after ordinance hours, as we all can, but maybe having something that, you know, would protect residents after those hours, maybe developing a different type of ordinance, maybe put a meter parking there, right? Twenty-four-hour meter parking, residents pay free. We got parking residential permits, they run our, they run our car, we know that we've, we live there, and we won't get charged for that meter. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but just so you're aware of what residents are experiencing. Out-of-state plates are really out of control. I know I heard at the last meeting, you guys are really trying to ramp up on that. It is a huge issue. Again, I think I have seventeen plates. I know a council person does live in my area, probably sees you too. Out-of-state plates are getting way out of control, so again, if it's something that, just so you know, that residents are kind of battling, probably everywhere. Second thing, I don't wanna beat a dead horse with the crime and safety, but to what Mrs. Slary has said, we do have the best police department, born and raised here, I think we have some of the best officers. All cities have crime, crimes always existed, but we have tools that make us more aware of it. Social media is not always a bad thing, right? We're more aware of it, so why don't we use the tools in our toolbox to say, what can we do as a city to make our residents feel better? Ms., Councilperson Booker, thank you for what you said, and thank you for really looking outside of the box and what can we do differently? But it, it is a serious issue, and as times are changing, we can't keep living in the past. We now live in twenty-twenty-two, where we feel with the tools and technology that we have, we can do something differently, we can act differently. Our behaviors and our cultures can change in our community, 'cause we want every resident here to feel safe. We pay top dollar. I know we all do. We all complain about that top dollar. So, I think it'd be really cool to just see some type of action plan, and it makes me feel super confident. and it makes me feel super confident in the future of how we're gonna go with crime and safety, hearing you speak. So thank you very much for that. I just want to feel safe again. I want my husband to walk to the store and know he's gonna come home because we live near the 22nd Street Light Road. It's a hot mess over there. It's my phrase of the day, "Hot mess." It's, I don't feel good when he walks to the store. I want my kid, one day, to walk to school by himself. He has special needs. I don't know if I'm there yet, you know, and I want to feel that way again. So thank you for hearing our concerns. The last thing, accessibility in 2022. We can stream meetings. So many people are going away from cable television. Channel 42? You can say that to some of the new generation of people that watch Channel 42. I have Hulu. Okay, they don't understand, but maybe we can start thinking about, how do we make this livestream YouTube? I am very well aware that the Bayonne Board of Education does do it. Residents are somewhat happy with that. We can satisfy everybody, but just thinking, again, the future and where we live and what times we live in today would be really awesome for somebody who couldn't make it tonight, has the children at home, family at home, got stuck at work late, to be able to turn it on and see what's being spoken about and see the hard work that the city's doing, see the residents that come up here and speak, whether we like what they're saying or not. I think it'd really be cool and transparent for us to do as a city. So I hope you guys please consider that as a potential option. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Boginsky? I think he left. He spoke on the doors, on the pigeons. Ms. Raheem? Mr. Matusik?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a moment here. It's in reference to the Oak Street redevelopment project. Let me give you a fast rundown. Years ago, they knocked down housing because of contamination. They put a cul-de-sac in some impression. We're gonna have two family homes. All of a sudden, out of nowhere, we find that there's going to be a six-story or 10-story building. Okay, let me just give you a what-if. The council meeting was supposed to be August 17th in the council chamber to approve the project going forward. We didn't get any notification. I didn't hear anything. It appears to me that the council has predetermined what they want to do, when they want to do it. There's a secret meeting on Monday where this project was approved going forward. That's absolutely unacceptable. I represent 20 or 30 people. Someone put a notice on my door saying the meeting was canceled. It's not an agenda item. Don't attend. I don't know who did that, but we would have a lot of people here that are outraged over the way this council works. This is not the right way to do stuff. Neil, how do we fix this? We're 200 feet from, a person behind me, Theresa Newman, is going to explain something, but this is not acceptable. I personally think you should rescind the approval. Stop it. I have a question. What can we do to stop this process? Because even five minutes, give me a break. In some situations and for certain subjects, five minutes, in order to respect, is not enough to cover the response. But that's an aside. So what do we do? What do we do? Well, you do what you want. Overdevelopment. Let me say this. Overdevelopment. God, there's so many monster places going up, trying to get out of Bayonne at 4 o'clock is impossible. Parking's an issue. So many issues. What do we do to change some of that and stop some of this? I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated. Every time I look, there's an empty locker. I put another home. And now you decide to put a senior present right next to residential housing. Unacceptable. We're gonna do what we can to stop it, and we're gonna vote everyone out if they don't work with us. That's how outraged I am. I don't, thank you for the opportunity to speak, but Neil, Sharon, you guys decided what you wanted to do without asking, without doing any studies, without doing any evaluations. You decided we're gonna put it there. Baloney. And the next time come around, your name is on there. We'll see who wins.
Ms. Newman?
Okay, I'm up here to speak for the same thing. This young lady down here for the zoning board said that within 200 feet, we're supposed to be notified. You was voting on something to change in our area. We would never have notified. So that's a violation, so you need to pull this whole deal just on that alone. Because not one resident on our block was told that you were trying to change the zoning. It's a two-to-three family zoning. That is not a zoning for a 10-to-family house. Not only that, all those people who lived in their house, who lost their homes, they lost their lives. So when you start digging and that dust starts flying, am I gonna lose my life? You tell me, because I called EPA today. I have them coming to test the land again. Because when I understand, that is still contaminated. And if you can build a building there, build homes. We don't want a building on our block. What's gonna happen when you build it? It's gonna be no parking, tons of ambulance, tons of cops. Do you want that across the street from your house? Because we'll buy up the houses across the street from you, and we'll put the building there. Would you want that by your house? Do you want it? And then the values. People on the block just build new homes, paid over $600,000. They're gonna lose the value of their homes. We pay high taxes over there to keep our area nice. And for you guys, not to even inform us or ask us what we thought about it, I think is disgusting. So, does anybody here have an answer for me? Why we were never notified? Remember, she just got up and said, "200 feet, you were to be notified. Violation. You didn't do it."
You should rescind the damn thing. Yeah, rescind it.
I can just tell you that the 200-foot rule is for when there's a change in zoning. This wasn't...
Yeah, and they change it. It's only a three, it's a two-to-three family zoning. So how are you putting a 10-story apartment building there?
There was not a zoning change that was affected.
Well, then how are you still putting that building? That building doesn't fit the zoning.
That would be the developer's problem.
Oh, no, the developer's the problem, and who?
No, that would be the developer's problem. He wouldn't be able to build on the property.
And, okay, so who's this developer? Who owns that lot? Because from what I understand, the city owned that lot. What, did you sell it to somebody else? But the city still had to pass the zoning for the developer, okay? So somewhere along the line, this still comes back to you guys. I want to know who's responsible, why we weren't notified. Because let me tell you, if I do work in my house, you want a permit, you want to be notified. Am I wrong? So why can't I be notified when something's happening in my neighborhood? Why can't I find you? Where are yous right now? Like I just said, is my dog gonna die when you start digging there? Because that land is still contaminated. Am I gonna die? Are the rest of the residents that live around it? When you start digging that up and waking up all of those chemicals, who's gonna breathe it in? Is it gonna be you? No, my grandchildren, me, my kids, we're gonna be breathing it in. I called the EPA today. They're coming out. So when they come out and they notify you, and I also want the city to pay for private testing. We want to hire our own custom company to say if that land is still contaminated. Because why don't you pull up the histories and the records of how many people died that lived on that property? Does anybody have an answer for me? Something? Mr. Carroll, you're down there. You wanted our vote. You knocked on our doors. So where were you when this was happening? Where do you take responsibility?
In the interest of fairness to the people that didn't have it back and forth, I'd be happy to meet you after the end of the meeting or at the end of the public comments.
I would like to have it on public record, too, because I'm asking you, why didn't the zoning board notify us? Why did everybody keep it a secret?
But it's not a question answered. We'll gladly answer your questions.
And I want also, I want every piece of record that you tested there. Who bought it? When it was bought? When it was sold? I want proof that this land is still not contaminated, that you did your due diligence to know that you could build there. Because that should be public record. Everything you did on that site, what you tested, all of it, should be public knowledge to us.
The Bayonne Housing Authority purchased the property in 2018 from PSENG after the land was remediated. Public service owned blocks 417, lots 1 through 7, block 472, lots 1, 1.01, 2 to 14, and block 473, 01, lots 1 to 4. All the sites were designated as an area of redevelopment in 2005.
By who? Who authorized that without approving the testing of that land?
Well, that, nothing to do with the testing of the land. They were designated as an area in need of redevelopment in the 2005 scattered site rehabilitation.
And who needed this redevelopment there?
Sorry?
Who needed this redevelopment there?
We can't do this question and answer back and forth. If you want to come after the meeting, Mr. Carroll said that he would take your number down and answer your questions.
I was in the neighborhood the other day. I spoke with many people. I'd be happy to do it. Just for clarification, that was 2005, or change the date?
2005 is when the rehabilitation plan was...
Well, we have to move on.
Well, I do know for a fact, I spoke with the people who were testing the ground, not even a year ago, and they said it was still contaminated. So, and also, even if the top soil's not, when they start digging down...
We have to move on to the next person, but everything that's found will be presented publicly. Ms. Medina?
Mr. Maglo?
Hello, Frank Maglio, 17 Oak Street, and we're talking about the same thing on Oak Street. Hello, everybody. I'm not gonna beat the same point. These guys pretty much covered it. I just wanted to put it on the record that I am also opposed of tearing up potentially contaminated soil on that property. Joe had mentioned lots of people had died before, so had Teresa. Many people died when they tore up all those houses, got everybody out, and it's been contaminated for all these years. My house is 40 feet from that property, so it's right there. So they're gonna build a structure that's 50 feet taller than mine. It's gonna cover my whole son. I have the 440 wall blocking my property. But, you know, for senior housing, it would be worth it, right? But not the contamination. If we're gonna potentially suck in particles that may take two years, you know, and it's not only Oak Street, it's Isabella, it's Columbus Circle, Lynette. Everybody could potentially be affected by whatever they're gonna pull out of the ground. We don't even know. I mean, we know...
Frank, Ms. Godeski, I can hear you from here. You're talking over him. That's rude.
I'm sorry. My...
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate and put it on the record that I am also concerned as a owner of a property there. You know, we've paid a lot of money, almost $600,000. We're paying 17, over $17,000 a year in taxes, and now we're gonna worry about contamination. Are we gonna live? The EPA, while I was reading something on the internet where it explained that the property has been remediated enough. And that's one of the things that I worry about. What does enough, what does enough mean? You know, we hear it all the time about commercials where they say, "Hey, were you on this site? Or were you on that? Or did you use this product?" You know, then everybody thought it was okay, but then it turns out that it wasn't, you know, so we'd just like to have somebody take a better look at it. The other thing about us being notified, right, I heard her say about the 200 feet. I'm only about 40 feet away. I just recently had a block party. Neil Carroll graced us, and we had a great time. But in order for me to have that block party, I had to knock on everybody's door and get everybody to sign to approve the block party. Everybody had to be okay with it. And I would think that digging up this contaminated site should be way more important than that. How about the thing with the pigeons and the chickens? 75 feet. I mean, you have to knock on everybody's door around to be approved for pigeons or chickens. I would think that contamination should be considered more, and we didn't get any notice. We've heard about it since 2017, that potentially that was gonna be a place for the building. And in 2018, we bought the property, but we kept hearing things, so we never knew. We kept figuring, "All right, nothing's gonna happen," but nobody never notified us. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that they should reconsider what they're doing there, and at least let's start the process. Granted, they're already building. I know they are. You know, they already have everything in, ready to go. But we should reconsider and at least have a conversation and get the information. Are we in jeopardy if they start digging? Because this is six stories. This is not gonna be like... And I know a lot of Bayonne has contamination, but we've put a lot of slabs down and we built on that. But this is not gonna be one of those things. Six stories, potentially 10. But I believe it's gonna be six. You gotta dig down, so that's gonna be going all up there. I have two little grandkids that live with me, and the whole neighborhood, there's kids on our whole block. That's why we do our block parties, to get the kids to come out of the house, and we worry about that. We worry about that. All right? Thank you very much. Congratulations on your elections, guys.
Before we move on, Jay, you have the next housing authority meeting? The date of the next housing authority meeting is now in control of this site?
Because I'm sure they had to do testing, and I'd like to see their findings.
Can I just make a comment about that? My name is Mary Basta. I live at 17 Oak Street as well. The City of Bayonne purchased one partial part of that vacant lot that PSENG owned. PSENG still owns, across where you look, it's Oak Street, and there is a cul-de-sac there that is Oak Court. Oak Court is a street. The adjacent property is still too contaminated. The city didn't buy it. So, again, where is...
The city doesn't own any of these. Bayonne Housing Authority.
Bayonne, okay. Bayonne Housing Authority is not part of the City of Bayonne?
No.
Okay. Bayonne Housing Authority, excuse me. Bayonne Housing Authority purchased these seven lots, these plots adjacent to Oak Street and Oak Court. Across the street, PSENG still owns the other side, which is also several different lots across from Oak Court. That area is publicly known to still be contaminated. So what makes us think that this Bayonne Housing Authority, where they're going to be digging, is just not as contaminated? I mean, literally, it's from me walking to you, Mr. Palusa. That's the adjacent street. So again, I think all of the records need to be released. And again, as Ms. Mack stated, that, what, 200 feet around? Again, as Mr. Maglio stated, my house is 40 feet from that property. And as residents of Oak Street, we have come to the city many times with other issues regarding the 440 sound wall. We're told it's a state problem. We have overgrown vegetation. We have feral cats running through that area that the Bayonne Housing Authority now owns. So, again, we need to see the records as far as the contamination is concerned. I have two small children who live 40 feet from there. I'm a resident of that street for 12 years now. Purchased a brand-new home there. I do pay over $17,000 in taxes. So I think that these records need to be released, and I really don't understand why Bayonne Housing Authority has been given permission to change the ordinance to put a potentially 10-story building where there are only two family homes.
There is...
Mr. Coffee's gonna tell you something important.
There's a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Their regularly scheduled meeting for the Bayonne Housing Authority is Thursday, August 18th, at 1:00 PM at the meeting room at 549 Avenue A. And then there's another meeting on Tuesday, September 20th, at 1:00 PM at 549 Avenue A.
Does Bayonne Housing Authority have the records that the EPA has cleared this?
I think you'd ask them that.
Okay, can I ask you a question? What part of the city is responsible for any of this? So you're telling me right now, yous are taking no responsibility for what Bayonne Housing is doing? So you're basically telling us, "Oh, we can't help you. Go to them." Is that what you're doing right now? That's what you're doing?
Or alerting you.
Oh, but you're gonna tell me you have no authority to change that?
To change what they can do with their property?
Yes. It's a city. It's still Bayonne Housing. It's still authority under Bayonne, under this mayor, under this administration. So you're telling me right now, you're just turning your hands up and walking away from it? And go to the Bayonne Housing Authority?
I think what was, Mr. Carroll agreed that he would sit and meet with the residents in the area, but I'm telling you, there's a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM at 549 Avenue A for the Bayonne Housing Authority, and another one on September 20th. Again, all the meetings at 1:00 PM.
Sue, you want to come to the microphone?
I don't want to interject too much on this, but I just want to just tell you what I know, and maybe the Housing Authority can tell you more. When public service, the Bayonne Housing Authority would never have been able to build, never been able to bought that property unless it was cleaned. It's my understanding, and again, I would like you to check it with the Bayonne Housing Authority, that they do have a letter, a letter from, they call it an NRA letter, from DEP saying that the site had been cleaned up to residential standards. People don't buy, public agencies don't buy contaminated land. So it's been represented to me, and again, you know, I will, again, try to, you know, get the records and give them to Mr. La Palusa so that you have a surety on it, but that that land had, that, only that portion. The lady who was speaking about across the street, the public service land that is still under their control, as far as I know, is still contaminated. They have not done it, but I have been told, and I tend to believe them, but I will definitely check the records, that that land was cleaned. definitely check the records, that that land was cleaned. They have a letter from DEP that it's cleaned up to residential standards. Otherwise, I don't think we'd be here discussing this at all. That's just that portion of it. I know how concerned you are. I will get those records from, I mean, I've been told that they exist, but, and by our environmental, we, our environmental engineer has reviewed them, so, but I will get them to you.
Thank you.
Post haste.
I'll make sure.
And what about the zoning? Can she get me where she advised us all of the zoning change?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, and I know we talked about a couple of things before, what we stated was, when we did an area in need of redevelopment study, which I think was done in June, that's when the letter, that's the two-hundred-foot notice. I will check on that also, but I believe also, I was told that was done. I, there's, there's certified mail things, receipts that come back with that. I will be in tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, eight-thirty, and I will go into the file, and I will get back to Mr. La Palusa.
Just, you're gonna, you're gonna meet with Mr. Carroll afterwards? If you can give him your information, I'll make sure you get that.
Okay.
So, but I will get those records to the council president.
Thank you.
Ready to move on?
Yes.
I would like to say something.
It's up to the council president.
Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Josephine Matusik, and I live at Ten Oak Street. I, myself, had neighbors on both sides of me that died of cancer, plus my other neighbors that died further down and up from cancer. We're not allowed to plant any of our, any of our plants that we have in the dirt. Why? It's contaminated. Now, you're trying to tell me that one side is good and one side is no good. I don't get that. That water runs off of that property, and it comes towards us, too. That, that property totally is contaminated. I, myself, have a tubary tumor that I have to go to to get, get regulated and keep under control. Not only that, but that's not right. I had a granddaughter the year that they started ripping Dallas homes across the street. We had to stay inside because the dust was unbelievable. We couldn't even sit outside. Our cars were covered with dust. This is just totally unsafe. You people, I don't know where your brains are when you do things, but apparently you don't ask us taxpayers what's going on. We're the ones who pay for all of this stuff that you have going on, and this construction business is just totally out of whack. If anything, you should put a goddamn hotel down at the Global Place. When the ships come in, the people have to go visit and stay in Newark. That's not right. For as big as you think Bayonne is, it's as stupid as it is, because you don't even have the seals and the people coming in with the stores that we need. You had, you couldn't even give Walmart space enough to have a big thing. I don't understand how you people think. I think from now on, a citizen should be put on a vote as to what's going on, and then we'll let you know what's going on. Thank you.
Frank, I gave everybody five minutes, you know. We gotta move on. Ten seconds. I can't, Frank. I can't. I'm sorry. Ms. Medina?
An ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson State in New Jersey approving the encroachment agreement between 957 Broadway Urban Renewal LLC for the encroachment of a proposed, a proposed vestibules associated with the restaurant to be located at, on Block Seven, Block Seventy-seven, Lot 16.01, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the council president. Mr. Booker, will you second? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, Ten is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Five Animal Control, and a resolution moved by council member Booker fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker? Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, Eleven is being removed. Oh, Twelve is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, New Jersey, Chapter Thirty-five Zoning Regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It is a resolution moved by council member Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
We have a question, but aye.
Actually, don't take questions for ordinances that are for introduction. The public hearing is in September. On that, Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, Thirteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, New Jersey, Chapter Thirty-nine Recreational Cannabis, and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, Fourteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Three Police Regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who would like to move it?
Madeline, we'd like to carry this, because we have a couple of questions. There's a little gray area on some items in the ordinance, so we can carry this till next month.
We'll reintroduce it in September.
Okay.
Oh, Fifteen and Sixteen are being withdrawn. Oh, Seventeen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven Traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Resolution is moved by council member Perez. Ms. Weimer, will you second? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Consent Resolutions for Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-19. Are there any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Officers' Report is a resolution moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-2. Any questions on the officers' reports?
Yes.
Which one?
OR, OR-1, sorry. OR-1.
So, we'll take that, and on OR-2, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
She has a question on OR-1.
With respect, Donna, on the vendor payments, is there any way that we could get a list of what's being paid every month, you know, before just approving them and seeing what actually, what vendors were paying? Because it seems like we're outsourcing a heck of a lot. You know, now we were getting a hundred percent income on the police extra duty. Now we're only getting so much. So, I'd like to see the vendor reports to see exactly what we're paying to everybody, but especially the third-party vendors that are doing work for the city. If there's, if there's any way that we could, I could get a copy of even this month, if possible.
Sure. Let me give you a copy. Sure.
Yeah?
Yes.
Because I, I think we're losing money. We're losing revenue by vendoring, outsourcing the, the police. Now, it's a third-party doing it. We used to get a hundred percent.
Director Kober?
Percentage is added on to that. The city is not losing any money on that. We're making money on it.
You're, you're making what you made in the past?
Making what we did before.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification, Director.
And on OR-1, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Consent Resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-24. Are there any questions on the consent resolutions?
Yes.
Which ones, please? Are there any other questions that I say to take them out? On the remaining consent resolutions, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
The question is on CR-16.
I'm glad to see this on the agenda, because I know there's somebody in this room that got a nice driveway for free. No permits, no, no nothing. But anyway, CR-16, what is this? Eighteen feet in length will protrude approximately five feet, six inches in depth into the city's row on Thirty-third Street?
No, it's in the right-of-way, onto the sidewalk. The steps stick out further than that on, on that property. All this was doing was amending the resolution that was passed back in May of, May of this year, changing the liability insurance requirements from two million dollars to one million dollars. The property owner could not get, and we spoke with his insurance company, could not get liability insurance in the amount of two million dollars, so we.
And why are we, why are we changing that? Why are we changing that?
It's above and beyond what's called for. In fact, we've, we've changed our protocol now to ask for one million dollars in insurance, licenses.
Can you explain a little more in layman's terms for me, please? I didn't get my law degree yet.
An individual came to the zoning department, got his permits, did everything he had to do in order to try and build a driveway, an off-street parking. Their front steps actually stick out, and it's been historically that way, stick out into the right-of-way, into the sidewalk, a certain length. Let's say five feet, six inches out into the right-of-way. The area that he wants to park is next to that, and it would require the vehicle to stick out that far, as far as the steps do. So, it's not impeding the sidewalk, walking back and forth on the sidewalk, any more than his steps are.
Are we, are we losing parking spaces?
No.
And we're reducing the amount?
Reducing the amount of the insurance to one million dollars.
I hope it works. Thank you.
And on CR-16, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Oh, I have other questions.
I know, but I have to vote one at a time. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Your question is on CR-18.
Can somebody explain this in full to me? We're now gonna be paying, increasing Rudeman and Roth LLC from the original that you approved, an additional sixty thousand to a hundred and forty-five thousand?
Correct.
Why?
Due to the extensive amount of matters that they've had to handle on behalf of the City of Bayonne.
Jay, how many employees do you have in the law department? Isn't anybody capable in your department to handle this without paying people a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
I think you might be aware of the conflict issue that is raised in connection with a bunch of these cases. Anything involving an issue that comes even close to being in contact with, a conflict with the law department is being sent out to Rudeman and Roth, so there's no conflict whatsoever.
Okay. You could've just gave them packages.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And there's a question on CR-20.
Okay, again, Donna, with respect, canceling items of reserve and authorizing their use as anticipated revenue in CY 2022. So, was that money that you wanna take out of reserve already included in the budget that you just amended and approved?
Yes.
Okay, how much was that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll look at it.
Two hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty-six thousand.
Okay, so that was included in the amendment. Okay, thank you.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-1 is authoring, authorizing the bulk tax levy sale. Would like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-2 is designating Adam Enterprises LLC as the developer of the property located at 1207 Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block Twenty-four, Lots Two and Three, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment agreement for the development.
We have a hand-raised question.
Of said property. Okay. First, can I get it moved?
Move it.
And second?
Second.
With respect, I also have a question on OR-2, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, all the development. You passed a resolution last month to halt all this development. None of these projects have started, as far as I know. Even the silklofts, there's not even groundbreaking, so I think you need to take these all off. Take them all off, stick to your word, do Bayonne justice, do your job, do the right thing. Take them all off. You passed a resolution. Don't go back on your word. Recall could be done January 2nd, and I'll start it. So, don't go back on your word.
Anybody else on OR-2? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer? Is she there?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-3 is authorizing and directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at 233-243 West First Street, which property is identified as Block 373, Lot One, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, constitutes a non-condemnation area of redevelopment.
Move it.
Second.
And on the, any questions on OR-3? On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Weimer, Mrs. Weimer, Ms. Weimer, I'm sorry. It's from the chatter from the back. Ms. Weimer?
I'm sorry, Madeline. And I'm gonna let you slide on that one, too.
And Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-4 is designating the Gamal Group LLC as the developer of the property identified as Block 361, Lot 12, and Block 362, Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment agreement for the property, said property. Would like to move it?
Come on.
I'll move.
And second? Let me get through this first, please. It's the same process. Move, a second, and then questions. Who'd like to second it?
Second.
Ms. Kodeski has a question.
Mr. Coffey, please read to the public the resolution that you passed at last meeting, item number 56 on the unapproved minutes, which are now probably approved, so everybody can hear what you, how you voted, and now what you're doing. You're rescinding that? You're actually rescinding what you told the people. There was a study that was supposed to take place. You were halting all development that didn't get started until the study took place, and then Ms. Weimer questioned about the traffic study, the impact study on schools and the parking, and you definitely sat there and said that this is a separate study. You're going to count the vacancies, the rents, and everything was going to be halted. What are you guys doing? What are you doing? And you're not even defending these people. You're pushing it off. Shame on each and every one of you. I come to these meetings for 15 years, and I've always tried to talk respectfully and honestly. And this is what you're doing? Well, I can tell you, July 2nd, 2023, recall.
We'll vote you out, the whole lot of you.
Please don't shout "out."
Sorry.
It's the quorum. Thank you. Any other questions on OR-4? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
I'm sorry, Madeline. I need a minute.
Sure.
Okay. So, Madeline, I need to make a statement here because I don't necessarily agree with everything Ms. Kodeski is saying, but I don't necessarily disagree with everything she is saying either. And I do want the general public, and especially Ms. Kodeski, because she's very passionate about the City of Bayonne and her commitment to her fellow residents. And I want someone to please correct me if I'm wrong, but these are projects that were previously approved by the prior administration. These projects are not being introduced for the first time now. This was a commitment the city made and approved by the prior administration. So, we are at this point in time, because I am very anxious, as Ms. Kodeski, to receive that study. I do want to see the impact, and I think my colleagues want to see that same impact that this development is having on our city. But if it was previously approved, I don't know, and again, someone can please correct me, if we have the ability to rescind that, and if that's, if that would financially be a good move for the city.
They have not broken ground respectfully, okay? Even though they were...
No, I didn't yell at you, and I don't expect for you to yell at me.
I'm just letting you know. Some of them noted, say, the word preliminary.
Some of them do, and some of them don't, and I realize that as well. So, if we have committed, or if our prior administration has committed to a project, whether we agree right, wrong, or indifferent, that was a decision that somebody else made.
That's...
Perhaps you should be having a conversation with the person sitting next to you.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Okay, everybody, let's move on to the vote.
Whereas, the City Council has undergone a period of substantial commercial and residential real property growth since 2014.
Excuse me, Ms. Kodeski.
You're at a line.
You made your comments. We're on to the vote.
And Ms. Weimer, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-5 is authorizing an execution of an amendment to the, this is the wordage on that thing is actually wrong. I'm going to read the actual resolution. It is authorizing the execution of a letter agreement between the city and the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey regarding payments to be made under the purchase and sale agreement between the city as successor in interest to the Bayonne Local Redevelopment Agency dated July 30th, 2010.
Madeline?
Yes.
Can I just ask you, what was that? Oh, the letter agreement. I see it on a third line of the resolution.
Right. Yeah. The initial wordage was not the same.
Okay. I got you.
Who'd like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-6 is, actually, we are awarding the contract for the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor Port Access Project, Roadway Project 2, Union Paving and Construction Company of Mountainside, New Jersey, for the contract amount of $3,700,549.81. This is with the local freight, the Global Freight Impact Fund Award.
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on OR-6? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-7 is amending a resolution to extend the award of the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor Port Access Project, Roadway Project, City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, which is the New Jersey Department of Transportation Local Freight Impact Award from June 30th, 2022 to December 30th, 2022.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-8, we are going to move to the end because we're not planning to come back out after the closed session. Correct, Jay?
We're going to come out, I mean, come out of the closed session. We're not going to do any...
Okay. So, we will move OR-8 to the end. OR-9 is authorizing the lease license agreement with 90 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the placement of utilities in the public right-of-way at 90-102 Avenue E. I thought I said A. It should be Avenue E. I'm sorry.
For the record, those are our utilities, and they're giving us the license to access our property.
Who'd like to move it?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-10, actually, OR-8 is not the closed session. I'm sorry about that. So, we'll double back. OR-8 is authorizing and directing the execution of an agreement with John Pulvich of River Edge, New Jersey, for the professional engineering services to act as the municipal traffic engineer in connection with the developers and redevelopers for a period commencing August 18th, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, for a total amount not to exceed $50,000.
Move it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions on OR-8? On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
OR-10 is our closed session that we'll move to the end. I'm getting ahead of myself. OR-11 is authorizing an amendment to the existing access agreement with Honeywell Inc. for the remediation of the Bayonne Sewerage Pipeline Site 144. Would like to move it?
Some move. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.